All right, the Stillwater Planning Commission meeting of 25 June is called to order. It will be the process this evening to call for items on the agenda. The commission will hear briefly from staff first, then applicant and/or representative, then open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or in opposition to the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. Before closing the public hearing, both staff, applicant, and/or representative will be provided an opportunity to respond, to provide additional information and answer questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will be closed. We will hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. So the first item on the agenda is miscellaneous items from Planning Commission. And there's one item, and it's actually introduction and welcome to new Planning Commissioner, Mr. David Peters, which I think he so knew there's not a name tag if I... Oh, he does have one. That was quick. Good. All right. So the first item on the agenda is Bancroft Design on behalf of Black Waters LLC warrant in the Form-Based Code, FBC 24-01, consideration, discussion, and possible action including approval or denial of a warrant to allow construction of a single-family home in the Form-Based Code area zone T6 at property addressed as 125 South Duck Street.
Okay. It'll work. Okay. Here we go. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jacquin Porter, City Planner, presenting on behalf of the Planning Department on this item. As mentioned, this is a request to the review and approval of a warrant to allow for the construction of a three-story single-family with a small parking area in the Form-Based Code transect 6. The intended design and framework of the T6 zoning is to have commercial office, high-density residential in that area. Form-based codes intended uses are to regulate heights, building materials, building orientation, et cetera, to encourage public realm appeal without regulating the specific location of uses. Transect 6 is for the highest density of buildings and residential structures. Mixed use is a highly encouraged in T6. Here's an area map of the subject property. It is located near the intersection of South Duck and West Maple. Here's the aerial view of the subject property. It is just north of Aspen. That is there at the corner of Aspen Coffee, of Duck and Maple. And the subject property is approximately 5,375 square feet. The proposed... Now, let's see, do I have? I'll wait for it. Okay. Sorry. Okay. The proposed three-story building will cover approximately 635 square feet. I'm actually going to do this, so you can actually see it while I talk. Sorry. Okay. The proposed three-story building will cover 645 square feet of the lot with five outdoor angle parking spots and a dumpster enclosure to the east of the structure out of line of sight from the right-of-way. Access of the subject property will be a one-way access drive from South Duck Street and cross into the property to the east. The applicant is working to file the private access easement to allow through traffic from the subject property. The proposed site plan meets all requirements for the building design, Table 5 of Appendix 1 of Form-Based Code and the Land Development Code. It meets all those requirements. The defined process for warrants are warrant applications to middle, IRC, and then coming to Planning Commission. The process makes the Planning Commission the quasi-judicial board for warrants in the Form-Based Code, Section 23, 4-4, notices that in hearings detail the map, amendment notifications, hearing process shall all apply to the Appendix 1. City staff has posted, signed, mailed property owner letters, and published a notice for public hearing for the warrant request. So moving on to the future land use map. The future land use map with the comprehensive plan projects the desired use of this area, part of the corridor redevelopment area, to be medium density of... Yeah. Medium density. Let's see. Yeah, okay. So on to the proposed, what it looks like. This is for conceptual, for you to look at, to see what they are intending to do. So as stated, they do meet all requirements on heights. This is just so you can see what they're proposing. That is also in your packet. Erin Ferguson with Bancroft Design is here to answer any questions. Do you have any questions for staff at this time?
Does a single-family residence really fit into the concept of highest density of buildings and residential structures along this South Duck corridor?
No, and that's what the warrant's for. It's kind of a warrant similar to a specific use permit in other districts outside our redevelopment corridor, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So we'd like to hear from the applicant or representative?
Hello, Erin Ferguson from Bancroft Design at 923 South Lowery in Stillwater. And this is a request basically for a variance to construct a single-family home within the Form-Based Code area. And really, we're requesting to construct what is already existing on the site right now. A single-family home was grandfathered into the Form-Based Code when the Form-Based Code was first implemented. So right now, there is already a single-family home existing on site, and the developer wants to tear it down and replace it with a new single-family home with a small parking area as well. As Jackie already stated, it meets all of the requirements for the T6 zoning area, and the developer also owns the property to the east. And so we already have an easement drafted, ready to file, to allow cross-access between the two sites. So there will be a full drive to access the street to the east, as well as full private utility easements as well. Are there any questions?
Seeing none?
Okay. Thank you.
So now we'll officially open the public hearing. So if anyone would like to speak in favor of the item, come to the microphone, state your name, address before commenting.
My name is Lester Skinner. My address is 1300 Old Bumpy Road, Stillwater, Oklahoma. I own the property right next door, 121 South Duck. Okay. My concern is the water runoff. Is there going to be containment underneath the parking lot to contain the stormwater runoff? Because it's higher elevation than what ours is, our property next door. And if you've... If all that water there comes, it will run right down on our property, and we're going to have an issue. So I wanted to know how they're going to retain the stormwater runoff in the parking lot, like we had to do when we built our property.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the item? Okay. Is anyone that'd like to speak in opposition to the item? All right. I guess we'll have staff come back up and respond.
I was going to say, you want...
So you are located in which direction?
Well, Skinner.
So which direction were you located to the...
It would be north.
North.
To the north?
121.
Okay, to the north. And did you have to construct any curbs around your property?
We had to put it under the parking lot, water retention.
Okay.
When we built the apartment.
Okay. So at this point, it has gone through the city, and engineering has reviewed it, and we submitted plans showing that there was not any increase in stormwater runoff to the property. So we don't anticipate any excess stormwater runoff from the existing site conditions as it is. As I said, there is already a house located on the site right now. So there's already impervious area on the site. We're not adding any additional impervious area that would cause additional stormwater runoff. So we're maintaining the existing conditions are on the site. So we're not anticipating any excess runoff from the runoff that's currently on the site.
But there's a... Is there taking into account the parking area?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And the engineering department has reviewed it, and they did not bring up any concerns as well.
Okay.
I'll elaborate a little bit. They have... Did a preliminary review. We have not fully done the building permit review for this project. So they still have to submit their building permits for everyone to review extensively. So for this, it was just a preliminary review of everything. There was no major red flags at the time of review by engineering.
Does that mean the water runoff question is still open?
I can't speak for engineering. I know that there has been a conversation, but I don't know in detail what has been... If it's been addressed, and it will be addressed further into the building permit side and be ironed out there before the building permits approved.
Okay. Thank you. Is anyone else that'd like to speak on this topic?
I would like to speak.
Come back up.
So we've done the public hearing, and you've closed that, and staff has come back up and answered.
Apparently I can't, sorry.
I can't speak?
I don't think so.
Really?
Who closed the public hearing?
Oh, you froze the public hearing?
Closed it.
Oh, you've already closed it?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't hear you close it.
I think the process is... The process is we open it in favor and opposition, and then once staff comes up, it's closed. But if you would like... Since he didn't say the words, if you would like to say an additional comment.
Yeah, I'll say it.
Which will be okay.
But you did close the opposite.
No, go ahead, talk.
Okay. I mean, yeah. I disagree with the engineering there because before there was house... The house was there, they tore down, and then there's another house I guess they're going to tear down, which they had guttering and diverted the water away from our side of the property. Because this property that they're going to build on is slightly elevated, maybe a foot or so. And when you put that parking lot in there, then all that water in that parking lot's going to run to us. And I don't know what they figured out, but I know we ran into the same thing when we built our property. And that's when they come up with... They had to have a curb all the way around our parking lot, and retention underneath the parking lot. I don't know if you know, with the big tubes underneath to collect the water. Because if it's just a parking lot now, what... Instead of the houses that had guttering that ran different channels to the other side, it's all going to run right to us. So I think they need to look at that, and... Because, you know, it's... Our building is right on that line, and there's... I mean, the water will just run right over to it. And we've already had some issues, and we've had to address there. So I think that needs to be brought up, and someone look at that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Okay, so that does close the public hearing, and we'll hear from staff.
As previously mentioned, the building permit has not been pulled for this project, so it will still need to be reviewed. All concerns on that request, they can reach out to engineering at the time of, you know, construction or when the building permit's pulled. They can discuss with engineering because they have further knowledge on that. Are there any other questions?
Just to reiterate, there's a point in the process where the gentleman with the concern can raise that and get heard by engineering.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Somebody with the ability to answer that.
Yes, yeah. I just encourage him to contact engineering since I don't... We don't have his contact information. It'd just be easier for him to reach out to us, so...
Thank you.
Yeah.
If you didn't hear that, there will be a review done by engineering of the watershed process. It'll be part of it. It just hasn't been completed.
Will we be notified of that, or no? We have no say in it.
Can you give us an idea of when this is? Will we contact? Is it due?
We can discuss after the meeting. That way we can kind of proceed, we can talk afterwards.
Okay.
All right. So any questions to staff?
Yep. I will give you the staff's finding. The Land Development Code allows for a residential, single-family use, and the transect 6 zoning does not allow with a warrant... Yeah, with a warrant. Ooh. The comprehensive plan calls for a medium density at the property's location. So your alternatives tonight is not these. Hold on. Because this doesn't go to city council. So your options are to approve... What are the options? Everybody review this. So, as y'all know, our code is wonderful. This does... So what it does, it does the same track as a specific use permit, but it only is heard and decided by you guys. It does not go to city council. So I'll give you the alternatives. Just understand that y'all are going to either approve, or find that it's not appropriate, or deny it, or table it to a certain date. Those are going to be your basic outlines. It's not this verbiage as it says, but it's the same structure as a specific use.
So is there any discussion?
I mean, the way I'm understanding this is that anything that was brought up as far as the drainage issues are going to be resolved in the building permit process, which we're still not even to yet.
Correct.
We're just going through the process of allowing the specific use at this location.
Correct.
The drainage issues will be later reviewed through engineering and building and be brought up during the permit for that.
Correct.
Okay.
My thinking is maybe we need to table this until the building permit process is completed.
They probably won't even start the building permit process, though, until we approve it, because otherwise they're not going to know if we're going to approve it.
Is that correct?
Correct. They can submit it, but it would still be held on us. So they can... So they can submit a building permit if they wish, but it would still be held up until this is approved. But that is also to 14 to 21-day review for this, for a building permit. Oh, and then, yeah, we would then have to re... Well, if they set a certain date, it's not going to matter, but... Yep.
I don't like the process, but okay.
Yeah, neither do we. It just references the specific use process, but you're the only body that hears it, so...
But basically, if we do accept this, we are acknowledging that during the building permit process, they're going to get the drainage right.
Yes, it will meet all city standards.
And that any concerns can be brought up directly to engineering from the neighbors during that process.
Yes, correct.
If it is sufficiently transparent, correct?
Yes, well...
The process.
What do you mean as?
Well, the question was, when will the neighbor know when this process... When the city engineering staff is undergoing this process, will they have an opportunity for feedback?
That one is undetermined. The only people that would know would be the applicant or the property owner. So when they submit it, and then we can know. But there's no process for us to notify adjacent property owners.
So there's not a lot of transparency in the process?
The only transparency is if they ask, and the Oklahoma Records Request allows them to.
Can they raise the concern to engineering at any point?
Yes, they can.
So, I mean, they don't have to wait on a specific thing to happen. They could call tomorrow and say, "I'd like to talk about this."
Yes, they can.
I see.
They can discuss what they look at and what's the determination. But again, they don't... They haven't done a full review, so they may not have that much information, so they're just going to tell you what's in the standards.
So right or wrong of how the process goes, the question that we are being asked is, do we think that this is an okay use of the property at this location, and the city engineering and permits will take care of the drainage issue from there?
That's how I see it as well.
So with that being said, I'm going to motion that we accept the findings and approve the specific use permit as presented.
Is there a second?
The warrant process is not a specific...
Excuse me. I will motion to accept the findings and accept the warrant use process as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second? We'll vote. So vote passes 4-0. Next business item on the agenda is Marilyn Shipman, MAP Amendment MA 24-05, consideration, discussion, and possible action including recommending approval or denial to rezone properties addressed as 424 South Husband and 212 West Fifth Avenue from two-family and multifamily residential to commercial business district. And we'll hear from Diana Hood.
Sorry, I just noticed an error in the presentation. Give me one second. Okay. There we are. All right. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Diana Hood. I'm the Associate Planner. As stated, this is a MAP Amendment request, or rezoning request, for the properties located at 424 South Husband Street and 212 West Fifth Avenue. As stated, the requested zoning is commercial business with the current zoning as two-family residential. Here's an area map of the subject properties. They are located adjacent to each other and located near the intersection of South Husband Street and West Fifth Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. One block to the south is Iron Monk, and across the street from that is the Payne County This is a street view. This image was taken looking northwest from the intersection of South Husband and West Here's a zoning map. As you can see, the area to the north and to the west is zoned similarly to the current zoning, which is two-family and multifamily. And the requested zoning, commercial business, is located to the east and to the south. The future land use map was developed back in 2013 with the last comprehensive plan and was meant to project desired uses in the area. The future land use map projects for commercial uses at this location. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Any questions from the Commissioners? All right, thank you. So we'll hear from the applicant and the representative?
I'm Marilyn Shipman, 3100 Markwell Avenue, Bethany, Oklahoma. I inherited these properties, and they're close proximity to downtown Stillwater. I'd like to be able to zone it commercial.
We have any questions for the applicant?
What is your planned use for the commercial zone?
We're going to sell it as a commercial lot.
All right, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak in favor of the item, please come forward, state your name and address before talking. Seeing no one, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the item? Seeing no one, we'll hear from staff for options. Close the public hearing first. I'm new.
All right. Staff's findings are that the Land Development Code allows for the rezoning of land via MAP amendments. Commercial business is located in the vicinity to the east and south of the subject properties, and the comprehensive plan calls for commercial uses at the subject property's location. Your alternatives for this item are to accept the findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed MAP Amendment as presented, find that the MAP Amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity, and do not recommend that city council approve, or find that additional information or discussion is needed, and table the request to a certain date.
Any discussion among the Commissioners?
Anyone entertaining a motion? I guess I don't... I don't know how I feel about rezoning it with just the intent to sell it. I'd almost rather it be sold, and then a new owner wanting to rezone it for a specific purpose would make me feel better about it. I don't know how you all feel.
Yeah, it seems rather speculative at this point in time. There... I think that's a... Commissioner is making a good point.
Could you go back to the two slides back, the slide before alternatives? So the comprehensive plan does call for commercial use at that location, correct? So I would understand from a property seller's standpoint that they may judge that to be more valuable, zone that way ahead of time.
More marketable.
Yeah. So I could see why they would...
That does make sense as well.
I mean, that's their judgment, so... I would motion that we accept the findings and recommend the city council approve the proposed MAP Amendment as presented.
I'll second it.
I'll now vote. Motion passes 4-0. We'll continue to the next item on the agenda, which is MAP Amendment MA 24-06, consideration, discussion, and possible action including recommending approval or denial to rezone properties addressed as 1302 West Lakeview Road, tract 1, 1412 West Lakeview Road, 1424 West Lakeview Road, 1508 West Lakeview Road, and attractive land on West Lakeview Road between 1508 and 1412 West Lakeview Road from small lot, single-family residential to commercial shopping. I'll now hear from staff.
Thank you. As mentioned, this is a MAP Amendment for the addresses previously announced from RSS to CS. from RSS to CS to allow for future commercial development. The subject property is located near the intersection of North Garfield Street and West Lakeview Road on the north side of Lakeview Road. Here's an aerial view of the subject properties. Lakeview Community Church is located to the west. Lakeview Self-Storage to the southeast. And then you have your subdivisions to the north and to the east, the Lakeview Edition and North, or Woodcrest Edition. Here's a street view looking at 1508 West Lakeview Road. The only property with a single-family home. All the others are a vacant lot. The current zoning of the property is small lot, single-family residential, RSS, with similar zoning to the north, east, and west, with university to the south, and two-family and multifamily is located to the west as well, to the north and the west. And then you have, commercial shopping is located in the vicinity to the west and to the southeast of the subject property. The future land use map was adopted with the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, which projected the desired uses in the area at the time of the adoption of the plan. It projected the use in the area to be high-density residential along West Lakeview Road. Erin Ferguson with Bancroft Design is here on behalf of the property owner. Do you have any question for staff at this time?
So, just to make sure I'm clear, the, the request is different than the future proposed use?
Wait, what? Repeat your question?
The, it's, it's being requested to change the zoning to commercial shopping.
Correct.
But the future proposed use is not commercial.
Correct, yes, yes. Yep, it's high-density along a corridor.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? So, we'll hear from the applicant.
Hello, Erin Ferguson with Bancroft Design, 923 South Lowry. So, at this, at this time, the applicant does not have any specific projects in mind. It is for, for future projects. So, we are requesting to zone to commercial shopping. I don't believe that he is aware of the, of the Comprehensive Plan. But there is, there is businesses located in the vicinity. Even though the, the zoning directly to the west is residential, it is still a church. And so, I don't believe that that's going to be changing anytime soon to, back to residential. It's, it's a long, a long-established church. And there's, and there's commercial directly, again, to the west of that church. And there's commercial shopping directly to the, to the east of the university property. So, even though the, the, the comp plan may call for, for high-density residential, there is still commercial directly all around the property. And, and, uh, Lakeview is, is an arterial, and we think that, that commercial is, is a good use for the property. We can see the city developing commercial out in that area in the future, especially with, with all the, the, the high-density residential and the, and the university growing in that area. We think it's a good use for the area, and so that's why we're bringing the, 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 the request today. Aren't there any questions?
Anyone have a question?
Thank you.
So, now we'll open the public hearing. Call for anyone to come forward that'd like to speak in favor of this item. Seeing none, anyone who would like to speak in opposition? You state your name and address when you get there.
My name is Fred Forbes, 1415 West Liberty. I own the property north of the site. And what I'm concerned about basically is dividing it to, uh, commercial. What kind of fencing or whatever, if we do, uh, rezone it? Because all of that is, uh, single-family housing. So, and I do plan to probably have a protest petition on that, too. Since I own the land right next to it. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, invite staff back up to respond.
With all commercial zoning projects, they do require, when they build, have fencing and screening to residentially adjacent properties. So, that is part of our code, so that would be addressed then, including lighting and those kind of things as well.
I'm sorry, would you repeat what they require?
That we require screening and, and, well, which is fences or shrubs such adjacent to residential areas for commercial or industrial uses.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question. What is the land use zoning on the south side of Lakeview across from a proposed rezone?
From here, it's the university's property.
Has there been some dirt work done on that property? Have we rezoned that at all in the past couple of years?
Not on Lakeview, no. Airport to the north, we have.
Correct.
Yep. Not in this vicinity that I'm aware of.
There, there's a lot of dirt work going on in Lakeview, just a little bit further west.
Yep, there is a fuel station that's going in for them, over closer to Western.
To the ball fields, yeah.
No, toward the, the bus station.
Yes.
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 They're creating a transit station.
Right, right, but I thought there was, okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else from commissioners? All right. So, findings and alternatives, please?
All right. So, your findings for this item is, the Land Development Code allows for rezoning of, of land via MAP Amendment. Commercial shopping is located in the vicinity to the west and the southeast of the subject properties. The Comprehensive Plan calls for high-density residential for the subject property's location. So, your alternatives are, accept findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed MAP Amendment as presented, find that the MAP Amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity, and do not recommend that the City Council approve the MAP Amendment, or find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation, and table the request to a certain date.
Thank you. Any discussion among commissioners?
You know, part of me does think that it would be a good use, but part of me does feel for the residents in the neighborhood that it backs up to, going from prob, what is, I'm assuming, just a wooded area to commercial, which is probably not ever expected. But, again, there is more commercial right next to, to the west with both the church and the commercial businesses to the west of that even.
Yeah, I, I feel similarly. I mean, if there was a guarantee that the commercial use would be similar to what was on the other side of the church, I mean, that's, that's nicely done and I think, you know, low traffic typically, so, of course, we can't, can't guarantee that at this point. Also, I think it was, it would be a challenge to build residential now that, that road is used a lot. I mean, because of Western getting expanded, I'm sorry, Country Club. I take that road a lot. That's true, and Western. So, that becomes quite busy.
Yeah, to me, that's, that is one of the reasons why it fits commercial better.
Yeah.
And I assume that there is a direct plan to develop that with this rezoning.
I, I will mention that it's commercial shopping. It is not our commercial general, so it is not our highest intensity of commercial. It is our commercial shopping, which is kind of in the middle. So, your Walmarts and such cannot go in that zoning district.
Any other discussion or thoughts?
I'll motion to accept the findings and recommend that City Council approve the proposed MAP Amendment as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, we'll now vote. The motion passes four zero. So, now move to the fourth item on the agenda, which is MAP Amendment 24-07, which is a possible, um, it's a recommended approval or denial to rezone property located at 1302 West Lakeview Road, tract two, and 2323 North Garfield Street, from small lot, family residential, to two-family and multifamily residential. We'll hear from staff.
Thank you. As mentioned, this is a MAP Amendment request to rezone the properties at 1302 West Lakeview Road and 2323 North Garfield Street from RSS to RTM to allow for future residential development. The subject property is located near the intersection of North Garfield Street and West Lakeview Road on the north side of Lakeview Road on the east side of North Garfield Street. Here's an aerial view of the subject properties. Lake, Lakeview Community Church is located over to the west. Lakeview Self-Storage, again, is there to the south. And then your northerly and easterly additions of Lakeview Edition and Woodcrest Edition. Here's a street view looking towards 2323 North Garfield Street. Again, this is the only property with a single-family home. The other is a vacant lot. The current zoning of the property is small lot, single-family residential, with similar zoning to the north, east, and west, with the university to the south and, to the south, and two-family, multifamily districts. RTM is also to the west. The future land use map was adopted with the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, which projected the desired use in the area at the time of adoption of the plan. It projected the use to be high-density residential along West Lakeview Road and then low-density further to the north. Erin Ferguson with Bancroft Design is here on behalf of the property owner. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Any questions from the commissioners? Is this adjacent to the last one?
Yes, it is, yes.
Thought so. Anything else? Thank you. So, we'll hear from the applicant or the representative?
Hello, Erin Ferguson with Bancroft Design at 923 South Lowry. Uh, so, yes, these are adjacent. Difference is, uh, these are on the opposite side of Garfield Street. And one of these properties is kind of an odd property. It hasn't, it, it's, it's the same address as one of the properties that we requested to be zoned commercial, but part of the address is on the west side of Garfield Street and part of the address is on the east side of Garfield Street, which is very odd. So, the part that is on the east side, we're requesting to be rezoned to RTM along with the long property as well. That's, that, that we're requesting to be rezoned to RTM, that's along Garfield Street. So, these will all face Garfield Street, which is obviously a residential street, which is why we're requesting these to be rezoned to RTM. Um, again, we don't, our, the developer doesn't have any specific plans in mind, but there is RTM zoning on, on, on the opposite side of Garfield Street, so it would match, um, other zoning in the area. So, nothing really significant changes from other homes in the area, just for, for, for future development. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the applicant from commissioners?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll officially open the public hearing and call for anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this item. Seeing none, is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and invite staff back up to give us findings and alternatives.
All right, so your findings for this item is, the Development Land Code allows for rezoning of land via MAP Amendments, two-family and multifamily district. RTM is located in the vicinity to the west and then west of all the subject properties a little further. The Comprehensive Plan calls for high-density residential for the subject property's location. So, your alternatives is accept findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed MAP Amendment as presented, find that the MAP Amendment is not an appropriate use for the properties based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity, and do not recommend that the City Council approve the MAP Amendment or find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Commissioners, have any question for staff? Thank you. So, any discussion, questions, comments about this MAP Amendment? It's my general sense is that people would have more of a concern going the other direction than going this direction, so...
And I would say that matching it to what's across the street works as well.
It's beginning to look like the corridor has got a buffer along the Lakeview corridor with higher density further north of Lakeview, which makes sense, looking at how the area's developed over the years.
I'll motion to accept the findings and recommend that City Council approve the proposed MAP Amendment as presented.
Second the motion. We have a motion and a second, we'll now vote. The motion passes four zero. Move on to the next item, which is short-term rental, STR 0164. Consideration, discussion, and possible action, including recommendation, approval, or denial of an application for a short-term rental from Shannon Cotter, property addressed as 1126 North Lincoln Street in the single-family, large-lot residential district. Now, we'll hear from staff.
As mentioned, this is a request for a license to operate a short-term rental at the property addressed as 1126 North Lincoln Street. Here's an area map of the subject property. You may recognize the subdivisions from some earlier, some previous requests. It is along Lincoln Street, near the intersection of Lincoln and Eskridge. As a reminder, the Planning Commission is the hearing body for short-term rentals, and the hearing is to be held similar to a specific use permit, except there is no staff report or presentation. If there is a question concerning private covenants or restrictions, as a reminder, the city cannot enforce those private restrictions or covenants, but can give weight to them as part of the deliberative process. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Any questions? I don't think so, thank you. So, now we'll hear from the applicant or the representative? So now we'll hear from the applicant or the representative?
My name is Brandon Cotter, owner eleven twenty-six North Lincoln Street, husband to the applicant on the application. As far as I understand, we've completed everything that we need as required by the city. So we're really just here to just make sure that you guys give us fair consideration based on the many, many short-term rental applicants that you've processed in the past, especially those who are within a few hundred feet of our property. Thank you.
Any questions? Commissioner?
Yeah, I have some questions, actually. So you're based out of Guthrie, is that where you live?
Uh, that's my personal property, yes.
So who manages the short-term rental for you?
We do, or Wood.
You would?
Yes.
So do you have anyone that's in town that manages at all for you?
We, 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 yes. I have two, in fact, in town.
How many people do you rent to? What's your max?
It's, it's a three-bedroom property. Sleeps six or eight. It's pretty, pretty standard for that typical size of a house.
You have sufficient parking for that amount of people as well?
Did you mention you had two other rental properties?
No.
Okay.
I said there are two other people here that can help manage that property.
Gotcha, thank you.
Do you have any restrictions on night stays or parties?
Not, I, the property is not even listed for an STR at this point, so. Your answer to that is I don't have that right now, right?
Okay.
So it has not been listed, it hasn't been active, so.
Do you have any plans for that, though?
Uh, well certainly could do so from the party standpoint, absolutely.
Okay.
You, you mentioned that there are other properties in that area. Do you have any idea how many other properties are in that neighborhood?
I believe there are two or three within that same subdivision and/or within two to three hundred feet of the property.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Will you, just as you would attempt to rent it, would it be through like a VRVO or Airbnb or yourself?
That's correct, would be through a service like that.
So then you can set the restrictions?
That's correct.
We've just had people come before us and one of the things that tends to make people more favorable to it is a minimum two-night stay so that they don't get rented one night for some bash from local. The other one that comes up often too is that requiring a minimum distance to live away from here to rent it. So just, I mean, you could do what you want if you get their approval, but those are just some things that help the neighbors.
Absolutely.
Feel better about it, so. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. So now we'll open the public hearing and ask for anyone to speak in favor of the item. Seeing none, anyone who'd like to speak in opposition, please come and state your name and address?
My name is Chris Redding, twelve twenty-six North Lincoln, four houses away from the proposed property. The neighborhood that we live in is, was a very mixed neighborhood when we moved there. A lot of retired folks, college professors, younger families, middle families, just a broad gamut because Will Rogers School is literally at the end of the street. We bought the property that we purchased so that our kids could walk to school as elementary school kids, ride the bus to junior high, middle school, and then walk or ride their bikes to the high school, although they'd probably drive like I did. But the idea was it's a great family neighborhood, or it was. When we first moved there, we had to worry about parking in the streets six times to eight times a year when the football games were in town. The city put in no parking on one side of the street so that cars could get by and that seemed to alleviate most of the problems. And, you know, you can put up with the occasional distraction like that. But when O'Braith Stadium was built, and we're, it's a beautiful stadium and it draws a lot of people, it started to change the complexion of the neighborhood because being two to three blocks away from the baseball stadium made it very attractive for this short-term rental type of property. And the homes in that area that came up for sale through either someone retiring and moving to assisted living or whatever, or just dying and moving on, these houses were being bought up by people that didn't live there and were fixed up very nicely, kept very nicely, but rented out on a whenever type of schedule. And so when we used to be able to walk the streets and just kind of enjoy the neighbors and talk to people, now we enjoy walking the streets, but most of the houses, not most, but many of the houses now are empty all the time. We no longer have the neighbors that we used to have. We have empty houses. Sometimes like Cat Frye, there will be houses full of parties and the streets become very crowded. The activity becomes very loud and we understand it's for just a couple of days, but at the same time, it destroys that neighborhood feel. As the baseball games come into season, we see more and more people coming in and leaving and it's nice to see that the houses are occupied for a short time, but again, it's just a short time and we're losing a neighborhood. Part of the reason why we love Stillwater, part of the reason why we live in Stillwater is because it is like a big neighborhood. Everybody knows everybody. Everybody hangs out, they do things together, they congregate. And what's even more special is they're able to raise their kids here in a safe manner, in a general way. And I'm afraid we're losing that, especially in this neighborhood that's literally across the street from a school, an elementary school, that has just recently been rebuilt. I have, I have, I have really a conflict personally standing up here in front of you because I am a very much a personal rights kind of person. I think if you buy a piece of property, you should be able to use that as you wish. But at the same time, I implore you as the Planning Commission to look at what's happening to the neighborhoods of Stillwater, especially this one. It's not just two or three houses that are short-term rentals. There's quite a few in there that are short-term rentals and there's more that are being tried or attempted as we speak. We get offers for our house, at least two a month, sometimes three or four, offering to buy our home. And while we've benefited greatly during this time and the value of our home exploding, we've been diminished greatly by the loss of neighbors and by the loss of that family atmosphere. What you do with this particular house is up to you. There's no law against what they're doing at this point, but I would encourage you all as the Planning Commission to be respectful of the idea of the neighborhood. I know that Westwood School has been able to carve out an area where they've been able to limit things like this. We have not figured out how to do that in our neighborhood yet, but we would like to. But we'd also like to request that as the Planning Commission for the city of Stillwater, that you help keep Stillwater, that special place to live, and not just a bunch of short-term rentals so that people from out of town can prosper at our expense. That's all I have. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and invite staff. Do you come back up?
In addition to the comments made during the public hearing, I believe you should have in your packet a letter sent in by someone who was unable to attend this meeting, but also if they were able to attend would have spoken during the public hearing, you should have that letter in your packet. Alright. So your alternatives for this item are simply to approve the request, defer for additional discussion, or deny.
Any questions for staff? Thank you. Any discussion among the commissioners?
I am curious, the applicant said that they have not done anything on Airbnb yet. However, this letter actually shows a Airbnb listing for the house. Please.
There was an active listing put out because we were unaware that a permit was required. It was immediately pulled down and then we began to walk through this process according to your standards.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Certainly not the first time that's happened, so.
Are there any guidelines for density?
Welcome to the Planning Commission. No, there are not.
Okay. I grew up in this neighborhood, the corner of Graham and Lincoln. So I don't grow up, I spent about fifteen years in the neighborhood. It was a family neighborhood. There's no sidewalks in the neighborhood, so you walk in the streets. So if there is a density issue, people are forced into the street or onto people's yards, so. But I just didn't know if there were any limits on the number of those kinds of rentals that can take place. Apparently not.
The city has not given us anything. We are basically the hearing body for it and it is up to our discretion, which we have been asking the city for, for I would say over a year now.
Maybe two.
Sorry, it's just the truth and it's been very frustrating for us, I think. I think that this neighborhood gets me for sure because we've had a significant number of applicants come through and request Airbnbs, short-term rentals in this neighborhood and the residents have continued to voice their concerns and they're, just want to keep a neighborhood feel and how they're losing it. I also understand the applicant's point of view saying, you know, hey, we see that you have other, you've allowed other Airbnbs here and, you know, we purchased this property to have as an investment and they do bring up the property values of the other houses and that's part of it as well. So I get that. Yeah, it's a conundrum.
It's definitely the most challenging thing we could ask is short-term rentals and I agree with you completely, but it would be, I don't know how we would make a decision that, okay, there's enough. Now we stop approving for a neighborhood.
I think that one thing we could do is we could make that decision tonight as us and say, hey, we're gonna let this one go through and that's it. If you come apply for a short-term rental in that neighborhood, we're, as a planning commission, we're not gonna continue to change the culture of that neighborhood anymore. I mean, the city's put it on us, so that is a decision that the four of us can make. Or not, I don't know. I mean, we haven't been given anything, so it's, it's really frustrating to have to work through that.
I don't know how to answer that. All I can say is, addressing your frustrations, the matter has been referred to the city manager's office for review, so that's where it's at in the process.
We've been told that multiple times, that it's in process.
That is all that I know.
No, I'm not saying it isn't. I'm just saying we've heard that story.
And no one's pointing any fingers at you by any means or anyone in here. But that's, that's how, I mean, I don't know how else to move forward with STRs, especially in a neighborhood such as this one.
I think though, on the other side of it, sort of the maybe pragmatic look at it is that, is that in reality, things change and that neighborhood's in a position, in a location because of O'Braith Stadium and things related to the university that it's just going to change. And you, as a homeowner there, you have to decide whether I'm going to deal with this change and live here or I'm going to take one of these offers that's maybe thousands of dollars more than it was a couple of years ago.
I think that's very insightful as well.
So.
Well, that's true, but that's an issue that the Westwood neighborhood had to deal with and the neighborhood organized and was able to, in coordination with the city, enact an overlay district. Now I did suggest very early in the process of this neighborhood when it was converting over to STRs, that the neighborhood should explore that possibility. Not that it's easy, not that it's fast, but I think we need to help preserve these neighborhoods that have been viable in the past and still have potential to be viable in the future. Now what mechanism the Planning Commission can use to do that? I don't know, maybe Riley, Commissioner Riley's suggestion that we approve this and say, no more in this neighborhood. I don't know what kind of legal.
I was gonna say Legal's looking at me like I don't hear you talking about that.
So given that, do we put this on hold until we get some legal feedback in regard to that proposal?
That is up to you. You can table to a date certain if you would like more information.
I feel like Jackie had something to say.
Yes. So as previously discussed almost over a year ago, even though with this application, it will still have to be reviewed before any changes happen. So this is gonna have to be based on what's existing, even if you table it. It's not, you can't consider it different now afterwards of what, you know, conditions and whatnot. You could possibly, but it would have to be based on this at the time of it's been submitted.
Right, so I guess what I'm saying is, is one of the criteria, I believe, for our deciding whether or not to accept short-term rentals is how it affects the character of a neighborhood. So what the applicant came up here and said tonight was, hey, we see that you've let a lot of other people do this, so why would you not let us? And so what I'm saying is, is if we let them, but just basically making a public statement that, hey, the character of this neighborhood is changing and we're probably not gonna allow anyone else, no. I mean.
I don't know that you can do that because it would kind of be along the lines of a moratorium of an Airbnb in that specific neighborhood.
Okay. No? Right. I don't know if I'm getting off on my own little tangent here. I'm just trying to figure out some sort of resolution for the homeowners in the neighborhood, but also keeping to the, you know, people that are investing in it because they are homeowners in the neighborhood as well.
It would really help if we had some guidance by a higher authority regarding this and we've requested that.
I do tend to sort of echo what Mr. Redding said is I do, I do think a property owner has a lot of rights when they purchase that property because they've made the investment and typically, even as Mr. Redding mentioned, the properties are well-maintained, so it doesn't devalue necessarily. There's no point in somebody buying it and letting it run down, so. As far as the argument about the character of a neighborhood, that's. As far as the argument about the character of a neighborhood, that's, that seems valid and legitimate, but again, it's just maybe one of those things that that's, it's the way it's going to end up.
I guess then I'll say this. I think that the character of neighborhood is changing, and with each one that we continue to pass, it's going to continue to change more. And at some point, I don't know when we're going to decide if we're going to totally let it change or if we're going to put a stop to it. I don't necessarily think that should be tonight, so I will motion to approve the STR as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. We'll now vote. The most impasses with three yeses and one abstention. So the last item on the agenda is another short-term rental. STR 0165, a short-term rental from Justin and Carrie Bohannon. The property address is 1603 South Berkshire Drive, in single-family, small-lot residential district. Now we'll hear from staff.
As stated, this is another request for a short-term rental license at the property addressed as 1603 South Berkshire Drive. Here's an area map of the subject property. It is located near 15th Avenue and Berkshire Drive. It is located, as stated, in the small-lot, single-family zoning district. And once again, just as a reminder, the planning commission is the hearing body for the short-term rentals, and the hearing is to be held similar to a specific use permit, with the exception that there is no staff report or presentation. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
That is Westwood neighborhood, right?
No.
Westbrook.
Westbrook, yes.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? So we'd like to hear from the applicant or the representative?
Sorry, I have to follow up after that other one. My name's Carrie Bohannon. I reside at 10310 Cedar Springs Drive in Claremore, Oklahoma. The house that we are looking at doing an Airbnb is the 1603 South Berkshire. This would be our second Airbnb here in Stillwater. The other one is in Brook Hollow off of Washington. We do have that one listed on Airbnb. We have rules of no parties, two-night minimums. Trying to think of any other questions you guys have. In the neighborhood that Berkshire is, there is, the letter went out to 52 people within 300-foot radius. 24 of those are not owner-occupied. So they're either a rental or an Airbnb. Not sure which on those. This one was a rental when we bought it. It was rented to four college girls. We decided that we wanted to make it an Airbnb. I just think it's better for me and the neighbors personally. It's occupied less. The college kids living there all the time is a chance of more parties. We do have rules of no parties. We have nighttime hours. There's plenty of parking at the house. There's parking for six cars at the house, so... Any questions?
So you have another Airbnb in Stillwater?
Yes, we do.
With rules?
Yes.
Have you had to take any action against those rules?
No, we have not. And we do have somebody in town that she checks on the properties before they arrive. She checks on the properties after they arrive. She communicates with me, sends pictures of everything that actually resides here in Stillwater, and my daughter also resides here in Stillwater, in Deer Creek off of Country Club Road.
Just out of curiosity, who's the typical renter?
Ours have been families. I have to, I make it in my Airbnb that I have to approve them. I don't let it automatically approve them, so I can look at the reviews of those people renting the house, but it's been adults coming for graduations, games, different things like that.
What's your occupancy rate?
In this house, this house is a four-bedroom, two-bath, so it'll be eight people.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask that very well. On the property you have?
Oh, on the other property, the other property is a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, and it's eight people as well. We have a sleeper sofa in the...
But is it rented a lot of the year? One weekend a month, or...
It's fairly new. No, it's, I mean, like, it's the summer, it rented for graduation and it's rented one other weekend, and both of those were actually for, one was a four-night stay and one was a five-night stay.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So now we'll open the public hearing and see if there's anyone who would like to speak in favor of this item. Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll hear from staff.
All right. Similarly to the previous item, your alternatives are to approve the request, defer for additional discussion, or to deny.
Any questions from the commissioners for staff? All right, thank you. Any discussion among commissioners?
Kind of echoing, I guess, some thoughts from our last discussion. I think this neighborhood, we have not seen nearly as many, and as the applicant stated this, there's quite a bit of rentals already in this neighborhood, so I do see this as a, as good of a fit for short-term rental, I guess, or not necessarily as good, but a better fit for short-term rental to some degree.
Well, and no one is here to oppose it, or no letters received, so...
We did receive letters.
Oh, okay.
But no one is here to directly oppose it.
Any other thoughts or comments?
There's just always concerns with neighborhoods in transition, no matter where they're headed, and the unknown of not having control. I think it's going to be an issue until we find some additional guidance, so that's it.
Seems that way. Is anyone entertaining a motion?
A motion to approve the STR as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. We'll now vote. The motion passes 4-0. Next item on the agenda is meeting summary for review and possible action of the meeting on May 7th, planning commission meeting. Anyone have any comments or changes or concerns on those minutes? If not, is anyone considering a motion?
I move we approve the minutes of the regular meeting summary of May 7th.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll now vote. Motion passes three to one, or three yes, one abstain. Next item on the agenda is similar, and it's notes from the meeting, planning commission meeting on June 4th. Any comments, questions, or concerns on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll request a motion.
Motion to approve minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll now vote. Motion passes three yes, one abstain. And the next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, or city attorney for discussion and possible action, which we have none listed. So the next action would be to adjourn if there's a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Now vote. The motion passes 4-0. We are adjourned.